I'm not sure if this is your packet or not. It wasn't mine.
Yeah, it's in the back.
I picked mine up earlier. You don't want?
It's behind the duck that I like.
Was it?
Yeah. Let's pay for what you're right.
It was in her packet and it was behind our ODOT. All right, well, now I am. Did you hear from Rich? All right, well, it's 6:01. We need to start. Bring this meeting to order. It's February 5th. Do city council regular meeting 6:01 PM. Just take a pause very quick before we roll call. Everyone is present with Larry Barnsworth on line. Please sit down. Please join me for a quick.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I believe the agenda is in order. This is behind the ODOT allocation. So I need a motion to approve the agenda. Second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Larry, do you?
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous. All right, next item. Well, in case you haven't noticed, Lila is not here tonight. She had an all-day training and got in real early and left at normal time. So I have all the correspondence and announcements I can leave. Not in order. Item B is the new Doom City sign. If you didn't notice, that's the corner there at Pacific and 101. Events-wise, we had the first event of 2025 last week, week ago. We had, I don't know, 14 come per game day and we had snacks and we had a good time. Shred Day is scheduled. Cities needs to shred documents. We're going to open it to the public. So Doom City residents can bring a box of documents they want shredded. There's a service charge for us to get them here and it's very low cost to add additional bins. So we're going to get additional bins and make it available to the public. We don't have a firm date yet. It's we requested a date of February. It'll either be the last two weeks or the last week or so of February and first week of March. The bins will be here for two weeks, so we'll have plenty of time to get the notice out and I can have people record and stuff over. Charter communications. We have a new franchise agreement that requires a public hearing or our attorney recommends a public hearing because we're adopting something. I think it's a 10-year period, so be aware that's next meeting. So that requires a legal notice. You don't have public notice. So Lila wanted to make sure you knew that. And then the stretch of highway here at 101, it's technically outside the city limits, but it's a husband and wife that had done the adopt a highway for some years and they've expressed an interest in retiring from that. So we have the application here. We want to talk about whether we want to sign up as Doom City as a community event. And the shortest period you can sign up for is one year.
I'll take that job.
Okay.
I've been going to do that for a long time.
All right.
Get my own little stretch of highway out there. And my own sign. That's the best part.
You do if you want to sign up.
Yes, I absolutely do, sir. I thought I'd have to go through some department of.
You do. You have to fill out an application.
Yeah, you've got to fill out an application with. Order the Department of Transportation.
Okay.
And if you want help, you let us know. We'll invite the community. We've got to do it or you've got to do it four times a year to satisfy ODOT.
Oh, I'm going to do more than that.
Okay, so.
That corner is terrible, Dan.
Yeah, I know. And it comes and goes. Yeah, you're right. And they will give us the trash bags. They'll supply.
They'll get it.
And they'll collect them as well. Yeah, so.
I really just want this on.
Okay.
I mean, I'll do the work, but I want the whole one.
We'll see who gets the application first. And you can either come to our event or I'll come to your event, so.
I have an event.
Well, the trash picking up event.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I was just going to do it. We've got to have donuts and coffee and.
No, I'm serious.
Orange juice. Okay, we'll get you a coffee. So. Yeah, I think ODOT will give you those. Yes.
Because I have my item that's skirt down there where the sign by walks up and down on your something.
Okay.
That's who owns the next shirt.
All right.
Thank you.
You bet. So the second page has what the requirements. So if you want to apply, go for it. You know, put your name on the sign. All right. The next event, we have estate planning. We've got an attorney lined up in April to talk about estate planning guidance, right? They're not going to put together a will for you, but they're going to give you guidance on trusts and wills and that sort of thing. Then in the packet, we had a discussion about the rules of procedure. All the comments are in here for our meeting tonight. And the council norms are for discussion of possible action. You have a copy. We'll discuss that in just a minute. And then the council contact list has been updated. Take a look at that. Make sure we have your number and your email. We had an address. It's been updated, so that should be the best. I already have your stuff. All right, and then one other thing, I guess annually, this is an annual. June 14th is the planned emergency flight landing practice at the Silkus. What do they call that?
Oram.
The.
Oram?
Well, they've got a name on the map, right? No, isn't it Silkus where they land their airplane?
They did. Usually Silkus, this year they went to Wobuk because of something's going on in Silkus.
Okay.
In previous years, they land and they just pull up to the Atlantic Oram.
Okay, so it's June 14th. It's scheduled. We just got it announced. It's scheduled for June 14th is their practice day. All right, next item is citizens input on anything not to be discussed on our agenda item. Do we have someone who wants to speak? Ricky, did you want to speak?
Oh.
There were a couple ahead of me, but.
Okay. Ricky, you want to grab me the sign and sheet? Okay, sorry.
I come to hear what the other people have to say. The way I leave after they're done.
Okay, all right. Okay, first one signing, Mr. Allen Snow.
I don't know if my item's on the agenda or not. It's true that my idea is or my wife's idea is because they're not. My idea is I've got three points real quick on nuisance ordinance. This is one of those is, first of all, gone through Lane County Code and almost every nuisance ordinance is already in Lane County Code. Please check that first would be my first idea. They're already there. They're already on the books. Fireworks to that. They already have this code. The second one is just be careful of that if you're going to emulate a city that's not on our side. Tax base or enforcement, probably not a good idea to emulate them. We don't have enforcement, tax base, so we emulate or do what they're doing. The third one is, we lived in an HOA for 13 years and they had all kinds of nuisance ordinances. Don't desire to live in an HOA. Don't want to be told you can't put your garbage on at 2 o'clock. Don't want to be told you can't put an architectural shingle on because you got to put a three-tab off. And it gets crazy and the years can go. Please don't turn us into an HOA.
Thank you. Next on the list, Mrs. Jackson.
Thank you, Jeanne Jackson. I think you all know me. I just wanted to thank you all so very much for the beautiful new sign.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Yes, what a pleasure to have such a beautiful sign at the junction again. And it is very reminiscent of the one that we had years ago that I talked about with the trees and the lake. I love it very much. You guys did a great job. And I'm very happy to see that Westlake is finally included on the sinus. That was a promise made to us years ago by the founder of Doom City that we would always be Westlake. So I thank you all and it's lovely. Also, I just wanted to comment on the mural. You have an artist who's working for you now because that's lovely as well.
No, actually makeup and art team.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's just a tapestry.
Anyway, since it was something we discussed before, I thank you so much because this is something that I know administrator Mills had talked about doing for years from 2016 on and you guys got it done and I thank you. And it's just a beautiful sign. Thank you so much.
And I wouldn't know, you know, that employee bought that, so it's not an incident.
Well, that's very coincidental about that.
Is it permanent or is it temporary?
It's temporary. You can take it down.
You can get a different one because it's a different fee. Okay, third, Mr. Watt.
Yes. Well, I didn't come with an agenda tonight as usual, you know, you do. But I did stop by and do. I came to one meeting. You were here and I missed a couple and I came back. You were gone. I did vote for you on that thing in town. I don't know which way it went, but did you get that job?
No.
Well, I voted for you. And when I heard you were a council guy, I go, I don't even remember voting.
You have to want to do.
Well, I'm sorry to say I haven't noticed your sign. I cannot believe I haven't noticed the sign, but tomorrow I will look for sure. And believe it or not, that's about it. I have other things I could talk about, but I don't see any point in it. Everything's wonderful.
All right, thanks for coming.
Can I make a comment about the sign?
Sure, you're a citizen.
Coming from the south, is it, can we get some trees trimmed? So you can actually see the sign. You can only see a little sliver of it because of the trees. I don't know if that is possible to.
Not it.
Have them look right and still see the sign. It's not visible.
I got that. There's a lot of stuff around here not visible because of the trees, so.
I don't want the trees to look bad.
Let me think about that because it's ODOT right away and it's outside the city limits. And ODOT, there is an exemption for safe signs. And because we had a sign and how we were going to cover it, we didn't even go back to ODOT. We just covered it, but I'm not sure.
I just noticed. I hadn't come from the south until today and I just noticed that you couldn't see much of it.
That might be out of the pay grade of the two volunteers to put the sign up.
I know, but I did see them when they were putting it up and I did not try and hit them.
You didn't actively try to avoid us. You just tried to hit us.
You should have got those guys on the street that were shredding down there to come and shred global food.
Oh, no, they, please don't. They need to go back to our, to school for harvest, harvest.
Just something I know was.
No, I didn't think about that because, you know, 90% of us are coming the other direction.
Right.
From the left, yeah. All right, thank you. Good comment. All right, so full business. A, updated council rules of procedure are in the packet. This is everything we had discussed at previous meetings, so it's here for action. If we're prepared to update.
Okay.
So anybody have any other comments? Or we ran through a group this. So the last version, the new text was in red. This one is all the same color after review. So we had a couple of suggestions that came from the county government. And for these, is that camera ready? Give you a minute to look at that.
I have a question. I'm just trying to find if I go up to see if you can hear from me. Look at, but it said that we're supposed to meet. We're supposed to wait to be acknowledged by you or whoever was residing before talking. And what my question is, how do we do that? Sometimes you're in one direction and sometimes you look the other. How do we get your attention to getting knowledge?
Oh, I think any reasonable waving of arm or noise, but I try to look both ways. I hope that I'm clear. So do we need to state something or you just want to tell me? Or should we cover in the council norms?
I just wondered because I just noticed one meeting you were talking the other direction and I kind of had my hand up and I don't know if I could see both ways at once, so.
Can, right.
What would you feel?
So usually for a discussion, I might go from one end of the table to the other, vice versa, but. And the council norms, we can cover some of that. You know, there's some procedural stuff in here about acknowledgement. So that might be a better fit there, which is the next item? Because it's a lot simpler.
So that was just my question. I didn't, I just didn't know what was said correctly. We can't go au or something and speak out, so I don't know.
Excuse me.
I just, I just want to know what way you would prefer.
Sure, all right. Any other comments? Do, do you have any comments?
No.
No, I disagree with Susan. I'd like to meet. I know in the past conversations, it's been difficult to ask questions of. Some of us do look to you and let you know and some people. So it's an all-new learning environment for 13 minutes. It can be a little frustrating when you want to say something, but yeah, never give up.
Got it. Rich?
I just think a little common sense and maybe to end just your, hey, I'd like to speak at some point when he's looking across. I mean, I don't see that we need to continue to rule and regulate everything right down to the nap, you know, so. It's, we're going to continue to over-regulate everything? I don't think we need to, but just my two cents.
Thank you. All right, Larry, any comment on the council rules?
No, I like what the document is presented. I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? I think that's unanimous. Second? Okay, the related item, you have the city council norms. So we've created our own document. Larry brought this up, I think, for the good of the order and I think it's great. And it's almost, looks basically verbatim from Florence. Mayor Rob Ward put a lot of effort into this. And so I talked to him today. I said, is it okay if I steal this? He said, absolutely. He shares it with anybody that's interested, so. So this is basically as it exists on Florence's website. And they printed it as a poster, put it in their council chambers, but. Oh, sorry. I mean, I said more comments. So from my perspective, and this is a suggestion. This is up to you guys, but I think, Susan, you're right. We talked about being acknowledged, you know, to speak and so it doesn't really say specifically how, so yeah, if I'm, if I missed it, you know, tap my shoulder, whatever, cough, pretend to cough. Say, excuse me, you know, I'm with Rich. I mean, whatever works for it, right? But you're right, I don't want anybody to get skipped that had something to say and I didn't realize it, so.
Some are just waiting for you to be acknowledged and others speak up. And so we just would like it to be a standard because.
And I'll work on that. I try to always, you know, we go through a discussion item and make it all the way down the table. So the one, the last, on the bottom half, procedural norms, we have. Where is it? Addressing each other using titles during the council meeting. Do you want to be more formal or less formal? I'm terrible at saying, you know, council, president, snow. So if we would, Florence decided they wanted to be more formal and I want to make sure, I mean, I'm a public servant. I don't want to be addressed by a big title and I want to make sure that it's easy to talk and it doesn't feel too formal and I don't ever want to stifle conversation or participation because of formality. So it's easier for me to use first names, but if you want that in there, I'll figure it out. So that's my suggestion. I would prefer to strike that one and just use first name basis and. Unless somebody has a problem with that.
I think it's fine to, if we want to be less formal. I don't think we should have to sit here and go, what was his last name?
Exactly. Was it to agree?
I think it's too formal. We're a small town, small place.
Councilman? Did you try to be?
Less formal.
Mr. Wells or? Rich?
All right, I don't think we need to go formal.
That was my guess based on the council's patch. How about you, Counselor? Okay, Larry?
As the supreme commander of the Pacific Fleet, I'd like to be less formal.
Okay, appreciate that. All right, so that was mine was the titles and then the other says call staff by name, by first name or by name. And I'm fine with that with all of this being first name. And that was really the only comment I had. I mean, this was, they put some effort into this in Florence and I think they did a great job, so. I guess I talked to Rob Ward, Mayor Ward at length today about this, so. He's excited to share with us, so. Any other comments or anything you want to strike or? Oh, and one other suggestion, and this is what Florence does, which is not to say we have to be just like Florence, but they all agreed with this and then signed it. So it's not like we're not adopting ordinance or anything. They signed it like a, you know, like a council charter. And then they gave it to the planning commission and challenged the planning commissioners to do the same, to follow the same. So we'll provide this. I'll come to a planning commission meeting and we'll have. And I'll, you know, and if you want, I'll give the same five-minute presentation about why and then I'll leave it to the chair of the planning commission to circulate. And we can introduce it at the budget committee as well. He says they do that for every committee, you know, whichever, just to remind people that, you know, we can agree, we can disagree on an issue without being disagreeable and to respect each other and that, that once we've made a decision collectively, we all support the decision, right? Sometimes you've got less popular decisions, but once you've done it, you know, either defer to someone else if you don't want to talk about it or say, yes, that was the decision of the council. I'm not. I'm not going to take any cheap shots about an old agenda item, so.
First thing I think is just a matter of everybody respecting everybody else.
Yeah.
And it's a good reminder and a little bit of common sense.
Any other comment, Chris? Larry, any other comments on both norms?
No, I like the comments and I think that this kind of commitment helps ensure a collegial atmosphere as we do our work.
Susan, any comments? Melissa?
I was reading that, that following bullet point in public, staff will use titles when speaking to the council. The counselor uses first names for staff.
So we can.
Can we're striking that.
We can either strike the whole bullet or just say we'll all address each other by our first name if you want. I don't think we have to write down.
I don't want somebody on the, oh, that's counselor. No.
Me neither.
I'm, I'm my name.
Then we can probably just take the whole thing out.
Yeah.
All right. All right, good, good comment. Do, any other comments?
No, I like where we're at.
All right.
Adjustments, yeah.
Okay, so. Let's call it an action item and then we will modify this and we'll send it around and we'll see if we can get a big one made for the wall and to remind everyone, right? That'll be in the, in the meeting room for our meetings.
Perhaps on our schedule, why it stands for a unit in our place.
All right, love it.
I understand.
Yeah, and Rich, Susan's ready to roll. So I need a motion to approve with two, two bullet points stricken.
So moved, second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. All right, next item is new business. It's budget season. We get a calendar through the state. We have a number of dates we have to meet. So the calendar is in here. We are on schedule today. We introduced the calendar and appointed the budget officer, which is also the city administrator and the recorder and the city clerk. But because by law, you. But, because by law, you gotta name somebody, so. I would motion Lila Timmons be appointed budget officer for the budget cycle. I need a second. Oh, wait a minute, sorry, I'm out of order, it's the calendar first, so. First meeting would be orientation and training for budget committee in one month, pre-five, we have it tentatively scheduled. Lila will be prepared with a draft budget and. An estimate of current year spending for comparison, since we're just over halfway, she's gonna take like first two quarters, double it. And say this is approximate, you know, so you'll be able to compare current budget year and the proposed budget for next year. So, if that works, these dates will get us in front of the state on time, and there's some notice, so it's important for her to have the dates because. The actual adoption's a public hearing, and requires some notes and newspaper and all that stuff.
Would we be following the same format as we were last year? That was somewhat confusing.
I have seen a cleaner version, and we used to do a two-year, which made it really hard in that interim year. We're on a one-year, so we're ending a year and we're starting a year, so it should be a lot easier to follow. There's a separate tab, there's spreadsheet, utility fund, the room tax, the general fund, so. Yeah, it should be easier. And there'll be estimated, like income taxes or fees or whatever it want, and one section and completely different section, estimated expenses that go with those items, so. There was a lot of confusion last time, but you know, we didn't have an income and an expense. And we would add them together and go, really, we get that much? No, we get that much and spend that much, so it's different, yes, this should be simpler, so.
It was just difficult, we were anticipating too much of a time limit. In one little format.
Yeah, okay, so, first item is the calendar. And the second is the budget officer, so. Sorry, I'll, I'll table my motion for a second, somebody wanna?
I need to approve the calendar.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous. Next item is appointing the budget officer, I motion Lila Timmons to be budget officer. For the next budget cycle.
So moved, second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you, that's unanimous. Okay. Next item, chapter ninety-one, the nuisance ordinance. So, I'll start by saying I agree with our citizen comment, it's simple, I think we have a couple of items in here with comparable descriptions. If we had thirteen code enforcement people. It would be difficult to enforce some of these things, so. We do have an example from Newport, Newport is bigger, it has a police department. Lane County is a good example. We have to remember both from Lane County. Some of that, I'll open it up to comments from everyone else.
If I may say, I like the idea of Newport's on how clean they were with the definitions and how laid out they were, specific articles were very. Jumbled together.
And some of the definitions they use like.
Yes. Multiple things that.
If it's a payment for a child, like how do you measure?
But not only that, it's really adequately not representing what we currently have.
Okay.
So I mean, I agree with the, the citizen, make it simple, let's not over-regulate, I mean, these are people's properties. And we should not be regulating what they're doing on their property as long as it's not public safety hazard to one, the ground or to the, the surrounding.
Yeah, that's one concern I have, is when we have multiple vehicles, and basically everyone here is drinking rainwater. Right, falls on the ground, it's either going in a well or it's running into the lake, and so pollution ends up. Or drinking water, and, and the level of filtration varies widely, so that's a concern for me. Anyway, Do?
Yeah, I just wanted to continue a little bit what, what Mr. Snow was hitting on, and then what. Richard was saying too, is, is, uh, number one, the common sense thing, as I was reading through these things with the whereas and all of the descriptions and stuff, it just. I think we need to have a regulation and ordinance and all of this, I think we all know that. But I think, you know, other than worrying about all of the descriptions and worrying of the things, I think if, if it ever comes up that our. Officer is out there and finds something wrong, and it gets to the point that it gets in front of us and they're sitting here and they're appealing it. Then I think we need to do our due diligence on that one case, look this over, and, and act that way. And you know, remembering that we are a small community, we have, all have property and, and wanna live on it, actually live on it, you know? So I, I think for me is, I'm not as worried about the whereas and the therefor's as I am as how we as councillors. Handle each one of them, when and if that ever comes up.
And it doesn't go on.
That, that, yeah, and that, that we handle it case by case, and then you can go back and look at any specific ordinance or. And numbered ordinance from that to take care of at that point, but anyway, going, we'll ask that, there are some descriptions in here that. I just go back when I was a kid, and a pile of nice enough, a cat sitting somewhere were pretty good.
Every pile of.
So, yeah, so, yeah, other than that, I, I read it a couple of times, and, you know, you can read into stuff and whatever you want. But I just think it's important for us as a council to take each one singularly and, and visit the place and understand what we're gonna be. Looking at if an eventual appeal or something.
You know, and one of the reasons this is in front of us is not because we had a lot of problems with the nuisance ordinance, but it was. Uh, short-term rentals, if they're, 'cause the general complaint with the short-term rental was they were noisy or parking. They were parked in front of someone else's home, or they were noisy late at night, so. So out of that, we said, well, then we need to visit the nuisance ordinance, and then we started reading and go, boy, there's a lot of stuff in here, it's. It's awkward language, but. The noise one specifically in here is difficult, right, it says audible, period, I mean, who's, whose hearing are you using now? Same way, and so. So that's what drove it originally, was the short-term rental ordinance didn't talk about the nuisance part, because it's in the nuisance chapter, so. You know, that's what brought it up, but.
I was right in the middle of that a couple years back, with, I don't remember the name, but the property, it was terrible, I had put over there in the evening, and when they were. Already in that northern house, I mean, right there, it was, 'cause it went on for months and months, you know, it was a terrible situation for them. So, and the parking was terrible, driving at cloud nine, really got hit hard.
Right.
You know, so.
Rich, I, I think that we need to have our ordinance sitting here. That we can start, we can go through our ordinance one by one and then take. This is Lane County, oh.
Sorry, yeah, ours is in here too.
Yeah, we've got one in Newport, are you looking for Newport's?
No, he's looking for.
Oh, yeah, so there's, there you go.
Two glasses.
And then, and, and just go through it. The problem is, you don't need them up close.
Oh, I got it.
And, and just go through it, each, each one of them and, and get it.
Yeah.
Get it taken care of, because, and that's where we started the first item, here's ours, and then the discussion was what other other communities do.
Yeah.
And so, and we don't have to do that line by line tonight, but.
Yeah, that's what we need to do, is pick the stuff you like, like if you like those definitions. Because good definitions go a long ways, right, and solve a problem, like if you know what it is, and it's described well instead of this. Because on set though, things appealing to kids, that's really hard to regulate.
Well, we don't have a lot of children.
I know, that's the other.
I mean, very deceiving signs out there, but we really don't have a lot of children in our country.
And, you know, like Newport here, they list, um, sorry for interrupting. Definitions of a vermin means wild or feral animals, well, I'm sorry, but we've got just about every wild or feral animal that there is. Living right here in our city, I mean, we can't really. You know, put this in there as being a, an issue.
It's a wild animal, right? Right, and ours had about feeding.
Yeah.
Deer. Yeah, well, our science says don't feed the deer, but our ordinance lists like five other things. Susan?
I thought from last meeting, we said to look at the Newport one, and then make changes to the Newport one as we saw fit, so I thought that. That's the way I looked at it, as I was, went through the Newport one, and was adding things to Newport one that I thought. Were in ours that should be there, and then taking, there's a lot of things to take out of the Newport one, but I thought that was to be our.
Yeah, that was one we had, because it had, it was clean, right, I mean, it's an easy read version.
It is much easier to read.
No, I agree, I mean.
It is, but I think there, I had difficulty comparing the two because the, the formats are so very different here. So it, it was a little more of a task, perhaps handle this the same way we did with our short-term rental.
Right, it took us a while, right?
It did, but it, we came out with a pretty clean document in my opinion.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it, it states in ours, under the nuisance effect of public safety. Number B, unsafe building, no person shall permit a building owned by a person to be in unsafe condition. As defined in the building code of the state. I mean.
That's our current one, right?
Yeah, this is our current one, right? And it's like, if it's an unsafe building, in an unsafe area on private property. Why should anybody be on that property, because otherwise they're trespassing. So, you know, I mean, I get a little bit of a problem by stating that you can't allow your building to become dilapidated. If you so choose, let it become dilapidated. You know, that's, that's like us in, in the building code stating. That you cannot build a shop on a piece of property without it being attached to a building or a house. That may be five miles away from that property, and then you have to sell it to them. That is too much control of a person's own personal property, in, in my opinion. And I think that falls along the same lines.
Yeah, so.
Um, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I totally agree with that, there's a lot in here that. Everything falls underneath an asterisk, of one, there has to be somebody who's bothered by it. And two, it has to be like exposed, so if it's by defense, if it's inaccessible, then who's gonna be bothered by that? It shouldn't be, if that's a neighbor or somebody who's really hardcore, that it comes to us.
Looking over the.
And we say, no, this is invalid, like, we're the final say, this, this is an irrational thing. It's not a nuisance, go away. So, we could get really deep in the weeds of how we word it, or we rely on, one, nobody's gonna complain about it, if they do, we're the fighter, that's fine, ours. What's a nuisance is.
Right.
One thing I will say, I think it was when you were on before, we had the one property with the cars, the most cars in the city, did. We stepped in at a certain time.
Yeah.
But I don't know how long the, the issue had been before we finally came in and. I think it was a week.
It started when the, the parents died, and the kids who moved in the house, place of the showplace before that. What's your garden, the whole thing, when the parents died and.
It's overflowing then.
So I mean, I think we need to take into play those type of, of areas when we are doing this, because they are. Not a, not only a visual issue for the surrounding neighbors, nobody should really want to have to, or have to deal with something like that, but more importantly, the, the land, the property, the groundwater.
Yeah.
Unsafe corners, sides of streets, we have a lot of people that walk, you know, and, and we're having.
Yeah, real, real fans.
Yeah, we're having, you know, people be afraid, you know, we can't have help, excuse me, help, that when we walk by something like that, we're a little timid. We're a little fear like, what's looking pop out? A bear, or, or other property, you know, they could.
That, that property, I recall, uh, when that was going on, was basically being utilized as a junkyard. What you brought up, the, the fact that it.
They were part of that with cars there.
It needed to be abated in that manner, so, you know, I think specifically had a, a reason to avoid that type of a situation here.
And one of the things that. Newport has this spelled out pretty well on page two ninety-eight, two ninety-nine. So, 'cause the question came up, you know, if someone said, what do you do about it? You know, they don't do something about it, and, um, the abatement here is pretty good, 'cause we called, uh, our attorney and said, what do you do? And they said, you need judicial orders, so this spells that out pretty well. You know, after the notice on two ninety-nine. You need judicial warrant, so. If it's clear, imminent danger, like a fire, you know, electrical, something like that, you can call the fire department or somebody, you can enter the property. But otherwise, you can't without seeing a judge to say, we're gonna have all this towed and sent to the scrapyard or whatever. Yeah, it, so there's a couple of big steps, and Newport's done a good job spelling all that out, so if somebody asked, because we were like, I don't even know, you know, what's the next step? But so, um, talking to the law firm, and they said. Think twice about going on site, you know, if it's, if it's something the fire department says is a problem, and I believe one of those properties we're talking about. They said, if we can't drive around the corner, you know, if we can't make the turn at the corner because you got cars in front of your house, you got twenty-four hours to get it out of there. The fire department need on them.
Yeah.
But they wouldn't onsite. 'Cause I guess they decided it wasn't enough stored fuel or oil or whatever that it was a fire hazard, but, but the stuff out in the right way got moved, it split, I guess, so. But it does, that, that is a good section, we would do this with the attorney, and it seems they have written down basically all the attorney's good advice, so.
I have on ours, bait and baste, I just put Newport.
Yes, because.
It's good and clear.
Yeah, add that whole next page or so, two pages, talks about notices and. Yeah, and recording leaves and so.
Well, not only that, but you know, in our section ninety-one point ninety-nine, any person violating the provision of ninety-one point oh-one. ETS, you can maybe deem it guilty of a misdemeanor, well, we can't determine that, so should be, at least adequately putting that in our.
Right, because Newport. Newport. Has a code enforcement person and a police department, so yeah, that can be cited.
But our, I would understand, our code enforcement officer will not be, be sworn officer, so we can't, we have to do civil.
Right, this wouldn't be criminal if you said.
Civil infractions versus.
Yeah, that's in ours, right?
That's in ours.
'Cause it says.
We can't determine if it's a misdemeanor.
It could be, yeah, no, I got, we reviewed that too, and it's like. You can't just say that, right, there's.
Correct, can't.
That was the attorney's other, uh, our city charter allows us to have a judge, they said, then you would have to have a judge. Because that wouldn't be appealed to the council, that would be appealed to the judge, yeah, so. But it can be, I mean, quite often code enforcement is civil because it's easier to process, you don't have to go forward, it's not criminal.
It's handled within the location of the.
Yeah, and you appeal to the council. So, yeah, I think.
As Susan said, I went through the Newport one, and it modified it, we need our city, which mostly that like leading sessions. We keep it in their format.
Okay. Well, um, everybody's got the Newport. If you wanna markup the Newport, we'll. Give them all back to the cap to kinda combine, that's why we had going through short-term rental and lane abuse, right, we had lots of comments, and. And then they take a stab at a first draft of adjusting all that, and then we'll put this on another meeting, and that's a good suggestion. And I think you're right, I failed to markup Newport, I had so many versions floating around. I didn't do my homework.
I think some of us did reverse homework in our divisions. We marked up ours and bring a little bit of Newport's in, I think that's what I did.
To me, there was too much to markup ours, and we talked about these Newport's, so I just did Newport's.
I have quite a good record.
Did you hear that, Larry?
Yes, I did hear it, and I have two comments I'd like to make.
Okay, please.
Um, I agree with all, all of the sentiments that we've expressed. Sometimes I think a nuisance code is written not for the sake of intruding on somebody's property rights. But to give the community some protection from the ancillary fallout. So if you have a derelict building, as I have near some other property I own, it attracts homeless and meth heads. So if you have a derelict building, as I have near some other property I own, it attracts homeless and meth heads. And so the abatement of the meth heads is to get rid of the derelict building.
Gotcha.
And so I agree with Rich's comment that, you know, we really don't want to be telling people what they do with their private property. But if it's bringing in these other problems, that's the nuisance code's purpose is to abate that. Uh, number two, I thought I heard Susan say she had kind of redlined this already. Is it, is it, uh, is it my understanding that each of us is going to do this and we're going to collaborate on a final copy of the Newport? Or, okay, very good.
And if there's anything else you want to plug in there, uh, that's not in Newport, but yeah, it sounds like we should all mark it up. And then we'll have staff go through all those comments.
Okay.
Unless one of the councils wants to volunteer. Yeah, either way.
I'm just going to reverse all of my other.
However you want to do it, yeah, because we'll either have a whole new chapter or you can point out sections of Dune City that, you know, I think you should just insert it all here. However we get there.
Do we have a, do we have an action by date for this?
Yeah, it was supposed to be tonight and some of us didn't do our homework.
In, in our defense, I'd like to point out.
No, not me.
I think so, I think you did your homework, but you did it reversing what other people did, which is, you know, I think we've all done our due diligence and we've looked at this. It's just, we perceived it differently.
Well, for a deadline, um, because it's a work in progress. I mean, this came out of another, you know, I mean, every time we find an ordinance, we, we decide, oh, we should freshen that up too, you know, every time we look at something. So, um, we could just report back at the next council meeting and then maybe 30 days from today, we could have a first draft with all those comments. Whoever, whoever's got martraps. Does that work for everyone?
So, March, first one in March, we turn ours in.
Turn this in in two weeks at the next council meeting and then first meeting in March, hopefully we'll have something with all those comments.
Would they give the office staff enough time to, with all their other busy work?
With hope and. And if it's not, we'll have that conversation.
Okay.
Does that work?
And, and we're going to mark up the Newport one, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that work for you, Larry, two weeks?
Ab- absolutely. Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're all ready, right? Yeah, I'm ready, but that's why my homework's done.
Maybe not for the record. Two, two people came fully prepared.
There's, there's probably sections where we all have to deal with.
It's just reversed.
It shouldn't be that big a deal.
No. And I think we have both, you know, in Word documented, so it should be pretty copy made and then how we want to get there. So, if that works, we'll. Next council meeting, or sooner if you're done, you know, we'll give that to staff to combine them all and then shoot for the first meeting in March to have the first draft back on the agenda, you know, martraps. So, does that work for everybody? I don't think it's an action item. We'll continue it, uh, for 30 days and we have our homework assignment, so. You get all that, Larry?
I sure did. Thank you.
All right, good. All right, thank you. Any other comments? For new one, okay. And before we go on, we got some comments earlier. Is there any other comments from the audience? Anything? Um, and that's probably awkward question because you probably haven't seen the Newport or the Oregon ordinance, but it's online. But is there anything else that you think we need to consider before we summate all of our comments? Mrs. Jackson?
I'm all on the break. The thing is, we actually haven't yet figured out how to go online and it's not like maybe my husband or my son could come in. I think that, um, uh, counselor, uh, Chris here was able to meet him when he played cards. He enjoyed it pretty much, by the way. That was really nice that somebody was doing all that. So, because you're right, you know, people need something to do here and all the people do. We all, we all enjoy it socially. I'm not making clear, but, um, no, I just, it's still hard to, I, I struggle with going online. My husband and son have tried to. My sister and niece who are pretty savvy, they are having problems with the programming. So maybe at some point we could talk about that. That would be helpful.
Well, absent having the whole thing in front of you, is there any burning concerns that we need to make sure is in the code enforcement?
No, I'd just like to say, I'd just like to see a copy of it.
Okay.
And maybe at some point, like meetings like this, I know that it costs money and we all operate in a small budget and it costs money. But it would be nice if, um, not that many people come to the meetings. It would be nice if there were copies of things that were discussed. For the audience to be able to refer to. And, you know, I would like to have a list when it's completed. And if it's done now, a paper copy would be very helpful for me and people who can't go.
Rapunzel, anything? You don't live in the state, live in the state. Any suggestions?
You guys are amazing.
Write that down. Okay, um, with that, we have no need for an executive session. Uh, for the good of the order, let's start with Larry online because we can't see him.
You all look better on camera than you do in person.
So do you. Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Hi, and you, Chris.
Rick. Um, I have a, an interesting one and, I mean, I know that we've kind of talked about this, uh, somewhat, uh, about our septic ordinance.
Yep.
And, uh, just recently, I had the inspection done on my residential house that's next door to my property. While I understand that we need, um, ordinances to help us keep track of septics and things of that nature, I think what we've done, uh, by putting this ordinance in place is do nothing more than create a GoFundMe for these septic companies. And the reason, and I'll tell you why I'm saying this, is because it cost me $375 to have them come out and do an inspection. It took them less than 20 minutes.
Yep.
Yep.
It was already dug up for them. It was everything, everything was all ready to go. They pumped 15 minutes with a green dye in it and with discussing with the individual that came there, we determined that the tank probably could go, should be able to go another 10 years before it should be to be inspected. Okay, so that being said, because he said that a tank should be pumped when it is at 18 inches of solids. We determined that there was four inches of solids. Okay? And talking to him, I thought we were going to come back with 10 years for an inspection or a look or something. What they wrote up and sent back in and sent to the city of Dune City is in eight years, I'm mandated to pump my tank. Not an inspection. Not, we'll see.
Yeah.
Two people live in there. Um, and in five years of owning that property, it's only accumulated four inches. So I'm going to pay who knows how many thousands of dollars to have it pumped. But I can tell you just about how much it's going to cost for a thousand gallon tank, um, is going to be about eight, nine hundred bucks. Because I just had my tanks at my commercial property pumped and it was about 3,600 bucks for about 4,800 gallons. Okay, now, I understand that I'm running a commercial property. That commercial property is a little bit different. That commercial property, we have deemed, myself and the people that I have coming to, to do the septic work, that that property needs to be pumped every year. That's fine. I, I'm good with that. I understand that. But when it comes down to this and where it comes down to you as a person and you as a person as a resident, you've got one or two people living in that house, that tank realistically should go 25 years, 30 years. But here we are with companies that we have created an ordinance to make this mandated by people that live here that are, a lot of them are probably on fixed income. And can't afford $375 every five years to have their, their tanks inspected or left to these people to GoFund themselves by stating, oh, now you need to pump it. When in all actuality, it probably doesn't need to be pumped. Now, if there's an issue, they should either take care of their issue or a neighbor is going to turn them in for a septic system that's pumping or sludging or, you know, that's servicing. But I think this is something that we really need to consider looking into because it's, to me, is nothing more than a GoFundMe for these companies.
Yeah.
So, that being said, um, you know, I, I just want to leave it to you folks to, let's look at it. Let's make a determination. You know, if we want to say, all right, every 15 years, no matter what, you need to have your tank pumped and looked at. I, I'm not saying that's what we do. I'm just saying we need to do something because this is an open, open checkbook for these people.
Yeah, I agree.
When we went through this.
My fault?
Well, we discussed it, but.
Right. Well, we, because our template, the city's template said you got to do it every five years, even though our ordinance didn't. So we had that discussion and we did some research. So there was a proposed change to the ordinance some years ago and an appeal to ElCog that it violated what the council had stated when they did the ordinance prior to that. Because the council had promised to go above and beyond what state law says. So ElCog said, the city passed it. Uh, but you're right. It, they said, we adopted the chart from the University of Oregon and it has, based on number of occupants and estimate, because I'm a single person with a thousand gallon tank and mine says 14 years, 13.8 years. And they said, see in five years. And so their recommendation was get an inspector that does nothing but inspect. And they are not tied to pumping because you're right. And I think you brought up the same, right? Every inspection turns into.
Because we have two people and we have a 15 hundred gallon tank.
And so, yeah, you're saying you're. Like 15 years on the chart.
They said we had less than an inch.
Yeah, so, so how do we get to an inspector? Uh, you know, an impartial, since we don't have a building inspector and you either need to pass a test or be an engineer, um, licensed in Oregon, I'm not licensed in Oregon, but.
Um, it's a possibility.
But that would solve that because you'd have somebody not tied to anybody with a sub truck doing the inspections. And then maybe it'd be a $50 inspection if you uncovered it yourself. And they'd say, no, you're good, seven, at least seven more years. And it's not a guaranteed pump, but it's just checked it out, right? Checked it out.
Yeah.
How much is done, how much is solved?
Right. And, and here, I mean, you can clearly see that they, they stated, uh, septic tanks should be pumped in eight years.
Yeah.
So, Dune City's going to look at that and say, oh, in eight years, you have to pump your tank.
Right, because we'd go from their recommendation, you require a letter back.
Yeah, I mean, why? That's, that's just, no, I agree. It's, so, we can comply with our own ordinance if we just had someone that just did inspections
and said, based on that depth, call me in 10 years. Um, we would satisfy the state and our own ordinance.
I, I don't know, I don't know how we go about solving that, but I, I think we need to solve.
Find somebody that does inspections that's not part of that team that does the pumping.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or change the ordinance to say it can't be inspected, but the same guy's going to pump it because we have this bit of a conflict of interest. It's easy to say, yeah, see in five years I'll pump it or you need an inspection every five years.
Yeah.
Well, and that used to be, that, that had a template. We didn't change our own template to apply with our ordinance. It just says five years. Everybody got a five year reminder and that's what brought it up. Um, one of the councils got the letter and said, the house isn't even that old. How did they get a letter? Um, then we read the ordinance, like, yeah, no, it should have been.
We got a letter before the house was built.
Um, that, that doesn't even make any sense either because, um, I use, um, Best Septic to do my pumping. Now, Best Septic and Wally's, who Wally's, they called and had Wally's come and do the, uh, the inspection.
Okay.
Um, they're, they're like this. And so they work hand to hand.
Yeah.
And Best Septic's from Eugene and Wally's is from here.
Yeah.
So you've got two septic companies that even if you have one of the other ones do it, they're gonna, they're gonna work for each other.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a racket, is what it is. And, and the city's created.
Yeah.
And you also have to think about the people that had it inspected and didn't have it pumped and when they have to go back and have it the opposite year done.
Yeah.
It also falls into that same category.
Right, yeah.
Or, yeah, I mean, if you, exactly. If you get somebody that comes in and inspects it and they say, oh, no, you're good. And when in all actuality, you're full. And a year later, now you've got to redo that again. It costs yourself even that much more, I mean.
Yep.
It's.
Something you could be facing every one to two years if it worked out in a special way.
Or set limits on the, uh, the amount that they can charge for doing an inspection.
Well, I don't know how we'd be able to do that if they're their own company.
Yeah, they don't really do it.
We have to change ordinance to reflect something.
I would want somebody to do it.
Yeah.
We shouldn't be in, I don't feel like we as the council or even Dune City should be asking somebody to do the inspections because that could be deemed by somebody, but you guys picked this one, so are you getting a kickback?
No, I think if there was just an independent inspector, when it was your time, you only paid for inspection unless they found something. Because I'm with you, then you can say, per the chart, based on your depth, the inspector could say, you're good for 10 more years. And now we comply with the ordinance, um, wouldn't get us sideways with ElCog because we'd be following our advice that we, because the county doesn't require that inspection. So we, that's what came out of that challenge. We had to go above and beyond because the previous council stated they wouldn't. So. Women and men, it just kind of got us here. No, we couldn't. They said you couldn't. There was a challenge from the WO, I think the WOHEA Water Users Association was the challenge and it went to, I mean, uh, the land use field board and they said, you have to. That's probably just settled. So, so we ended up with a modified ordinance, uh, which has those allowances. But yeah, you really need an independent inspector. That was their recommendation. It's find an independent inspector and then just follow the chart from the inspection. Yours would probably say, see you in 10 years.
Yeah.
For inspection.
For inspection.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, uh, and I don't know if there is an independent inspector.
I see Duke's got. I got, I got way too much to say for this tonight. I think we need to put this for discussion item on the agenda and bring this back up for septic ordinance because during my time not being here, the two years, and that's all I talked to about people were calling me because I was a big advocate of getting rid of the septic ordinance how it was. And when I left, we did have a septic ordinance and it was based on having it pumped and with the owner there. And the owner would tell the pumper, the user, if you're one person, two person, and it went, it was based on that. That never got done.
No, it is. It is.
Well, they're not, they're not following.
Exactly.
No, they're not following.
They're not following.
I got the same thing, just five years.
The other thing that always pissed me off is that they, the inspection, well, they play this catch 21 thing with you. At least that's the way it used to be. You couldn't do an inspection without having it pumped.
Correct.
You know, it, it, pump the thing. That you couldn't do a proper inspection without having it pumped. So you had to pay to have it pumped and it was inspecting for cracks and leaks and that kind of, that kind of stuff. I know, I, I bet it's the tip of the spear on this, so I, I would really like to get an ordinance that fits Dune City once and for all. It'd be nice. Myself, I got a letter from Dune City. I'm standing up on this because my wife and I work every day. We're, we're home in the evenings. We're not raising kids anymore. I've had it pumped twice since my kids haven't been and all. I'm not pumping it anymore. Yeah, right. That's, that's, you know, that's, I've been to the point where something will get done. I guess that's what I'm trying to do. I'll, I'll stand on that.
Can I say something? We have, I live in Lake County, but, um, Oregon Water Services comes out and inspects ours. I wonder if they could come out here and inspect your guys' because they have nothing to do with septic tanks.
They only use.
Yeah.
And then they tell us when, you know, I always ask them, well, when do you think we need to have a pump?
They give you a depth and say.
And they say, oh, not for years, so.
Yeah. That's what we need, that was the recommendation, was find an independent, so that's what we need to know, if there's somebody out there that will do an inspection and give you that bill of health.
Yeah.
Because our own ordinance says you can use the chart and based on the size and occupancy. And if they verify that, yeah, you could get a letter that says.
That was, that's a great ordinance, but it just doesn't seem like it was being followed. I don't know if it was being followed, I'd say, where the where the pumpers.
It's turning out every five years, no matter what.
Yeah.
They may only charge us a hundred and seventy-five dollars just come out and inspect it.
Yeah, I I mean, that was, that was the thing that got me, is three hundred and seventy-five dollars for twenty minutes or maybe half an hour of them being on site, uh, and.
They didn't have to pump it, right?
No, they didn't have to do nothing.
Right.
All they had to do was walk up there, lid was open, it's ready to go.
Yeah.
Uh, put dye in there, use my my water and run water in it for twenty minutes and fill out the paperwork as they're sitting there and walk out the door. And then send me a notice saying, uh, you owe me three hundred and seventy-five dollars, I'll supply the information once you pay me.
Right.
Which I get, I mean, but.
Yeah, we just follow.
I do think, excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, I think we need to find options because the ordinance is okay.
I think, I really think we need to put this on the discussion item because more things from what is coming up here. Make make the, when they, you know, we, I think we need to put it on the discussion item.
Okay.
I've got too much things to say.
All right, got it, we were, that was your item. That was your for the good of the order, thank you very much. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Yeah, we were, wait a minute, no, I'm not.
I did.
Melissa. Do.
I got more.
Okay, go ahead.
I went to a planning commission meeting, the last meeting.
Okay.
And, uh. Because some things that went on there for for the good of the order, uh. I think it would be very, I don't know the procedure for this exactly, if it would be an action item or again, if we need to put it on the agenda, but I think. As of right now, from what I understand, the uh, planning commission meetings are just audio recorded.
Correct, right, yeah.
And I think, I think they need to be audio and and video recorded.
Okay, I agree, and that's why we purchased, so we didn't have to pay for a separate cameraman for any meeting and we can do the same for budget committee as well, so that the.
I think, I think it's, I think it protects the community, I think it protects staff, it protects the council, or the planning commission, whatever it may be.
I agree.
Good, so I, you know, I don't know if we want to put that on the agenda as well for a.
I think we need to, I think we have, yeah, I think it's a matter of mostly training because.
Okay.
Chris has been doing this and we just need to train anybody else that needs to be able to start the meeting and do it for planning commission or whatever.
And to be clear, everything's recorded on the security system.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-four seven for like at least a week, if not two. So we do have video of anything that happens at any of the meetings.
Okay.
Which is, is it streamed live?
And it's not matched to the audio, you know, it'd be a manual process to listen.
I don't want to, I don't know if it needs to be streamed live or anything, just so there was a video record of that meeting.
Yeah, well, and yeah, we now have, you know, council meetings, we can do the same for budget committee meeting, planning commission, whatever, and then we can save them and, uh.
I agree, I think that'd be good.
Yeah, we now have, we don't need to do that, so. All right, anything else?
Oh, yeah.
All right, uh. Seeing nothing, uh, I need a motion to adjourn.
I need to adjourn the meeting.
I remember last meeting, I'm here out of town too, it's the first time I didn't have to be prompted. So proud of you here, uh, I need a second, a second, thank you, all of the favor. All right, all right, thank you. Thank you, it's, uh, seven fourteen.